All right, let's call the meeting to order at nine oh one. And we have five regulars. Julie and David are here as well, and Ed Martha is coming, but it'll be a little late. Any changes to the regular meeting minutes? And if, if, if not, we need a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
From September eighth and Carolyn seconds discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining unanimous? Public comment, anyone in the, in the, in the peanut gallery have any comments? Okay. And then the co chairs report.
Do you like go first?
No. I have a tagline for what you're reporting.
Okay, well, I was just going to report that Russ and I went out to Griswold Point whenever and talked to somebody out there who was trying to come up with some solutions for an old house that they had inherited. And although it's not in our jurisdiction, I think they were interested in talking to us because of our initial involvement in nominating or supporting the nomination of the whole property for the National Historic Register. So I just wanted to say that we, we, we had a good meeting and gave them some information on shippo and Connecticut preservation, people they could talk to as they continue to evaluate their options. So, but it did sort of reiterate to us the the, the, the notion that was mentioned in the P O C D that the town of Olmheim does not have a demolition delay ordinance and that that might be something that could be considered.
So I just and thank you both for, for going. I, I just want to add a couple of taglines. One is it's not in our jurisdiction in terms of approving a C of A. It is in our statutory jurisdiction because we do have statutory authority to come cooperate with other organizations interested in historic preservation, which is why we got the initial material about the Griswold Point District. And it is within our jurisdiction to provide information to citizens in town about historic preservation. The other thing I wanted to mention is Martha had circulated a notice about a meeting, I think hosted by Saybrook. You recall that concerning preservation of historic structures? And
You, you did.
Yeah, if, if you or Danny or Russ have not yet sent that to whoever you met with.
I have not.
If one of you could do that, they might well be interested in it.
Was it the 23rd or something like, yeah, yeah.
I think so. I think it was the 23rd.
I'll, I'll send it around. I'm not in town on the 23rd, but if, if somebody else is.
I can, I can forward it.
Well, I was gonna say also, if somebody from the commission
attends.
Wants to attend, it, it could be a useful source of information for us. And the others, the other thing on this point is the state of Connecticut has a stat statute, obviously, that authorizes historic district commission. It also has a statute that authorizes historic house commissions, which have similar C of A functions for historic houses in town that are not part of the historic district commission. And in some towns, this can be, it is a separate commission in other towns. The historic district commission assumes the role also of a historic house commission. The downside in terms of complete attention to historic renovation issues is that homeowners can opt out of the historic house commission. But that might be something we should give attention to as we're working on our demolition guidelines. I mean, we, this issue was brought to mind because from early reports, we were, we were this close to losing a truly historic house.
John, I have a question about that. If somebody has a historic house designation and can they, would, if, if they didn't want to abide by whatever the the H D C or other preservation organizations recommend, would they then lose their historic house designation or they can keep it, but just opt out of?
Well, it's, it's similar to in the historic district commission. If they want to make changes to the historic house, including demolition, they have to come to the commission to seek a C of A.
Uh huh.
And
It's tough. It's tough from an insurance point of view. We don't need to pursue that. I was just, I was just interested. Yeah, okay.
Idea. Other things I had on my list briefly, the did I, are the minutes in here, Martha, did I give an update about the train last meeting?
You did.
Yeah. So we're not going to hear anything more until December and a decision on funding for the Amtrak study. Next month, November third is, the town hall is occupied with election business, as is Martha. So my hope is that folks would be available to shift the November meeting to November 10th. And that way we can have Martha's assistance. Would that work? Angel, let's, let's do that. One other bit of news, I was ran into Martha Shoemaker, who introduced me to a woman named Elena, who is a Yukon student here on an internship through March and is available to boards and commissions to help organize things, help create procedures. So I just ask if you all can put your minds to work is, if, if, if projects that historic district commission could use help with, that would be, that would be great.
Martha, have you, that sounds like someone who could help Martha.
Yes, I meant, that was my, that was one of the things I mentioned to Martha.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have some, some ideas for some Excel spreadsheets. Hopefully she will know Excel or he, or she will know Excel.
She, yeah.
She, yeah, that would be nice.
I'll, I'll get the, the contact information, Martha, and put you in touch and
Okay, that would be great.
Talk a little bit about what projects may be
Yeah.
Good to work on. And the last thing I would note in the co chairs report is that today, unfortunately, is Deanie's last meeting. And I don't know what to say. I think, I think it's going to take at least two people to replace her. She's done a tremendous amount of work in, in, for the commission and in town. And it's been, it's been wonderful working with you.
Same, absolutely.
We do have we do have a card, yes? Oh, it's still out there.
At the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay. We'll do that.
Yeah.
We'll do something at the end of the meeting. Ed will be here too.
Thank you, John. I appreciate everybody's.
I guess we're gonna save this to the end of the meeting and then Ed don't open, so don't open.
It's like Christmas. John, have you put the money?
So, onto our meeting. Yeah, we're a little early, but Eric's here, so we might as well proceed.
Morning, everybody.
Morning, Eric.
So we received five bids last week. Three of them that were actively pursuing checking references, but fall within our budget with going to concrete as we would like to do for the front apron. Do the strength and reliability and, and all of that. So I did submit the CO, COA in advance of the, hopefully coming within budget. So with your guys sign off, that's what we will be pursuing with the concrete. And everything else will stay blacktop as is, nothing will change, you know, change there, so.
So the concrete's going to cover the entire area out to the street?
No, so if, if you were to go by there, as, as you can see and drawn, it's, it's a smaller section. In front of the firehouse right now, there is a stamped asphalt little apron in front that those dimensions, that doesn't go out to Lime Street. There's still black asphalt from that point forward. So the idea would be to match that exactly the same dimensions. And there would be about probably 15 to 20 feet of blacktop asphalt that meets Lime, you know, makes that connection. So this is just an area where when the trucks are out in front of the firehouse, they're parked on that. This was redone, I think, 20, 20 years ago or 25. And there's, there's a lot of, you know, where the trucks go in and out. So the idea is this would save us from having that issue.
And this is just concrete colored?
It'll just, it'll be colored concrete because the staining is a lot more money. It'll just be a brushed finish, you know, vroom finish, you know, so it's rough, you know, rough, you know, people aren't slipping on it. That's what's recommended from our public works director, Ed Adante, as well. He says, you know, staining it, and it just causes more issues down the road with it flaking off and, you know, that sort of stuff. So his recommendation, do it just concrete with a brush finish. It will be more reliable for us in the end than asphalt.
It's brick?
No, it'll just be like a sidewalk, you know, finish of a sidewalk, basically. So that's all would, you know, would change. So it would be that light gray color from the street surrounded by blacktop.
But it's like, it looks like brick now, is it?
Yeah, so right now, the color has faded off over the years. It was done as a freebie when they had it done 25 years ago. So right now, if you really look at it, you can see that it looks like brick, you know, like a brick pattern. It probably looked nicer 25 years ago, but that, that has all worn off. So if you're just driving by to meet quickly, you don't really notice it, that's it. But that's the area we would do, just in that specific spot.
Other discussion? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Is there a motion to
I'll make the question.
Approve the C of A as submitted with the stipulations that the concrete be unstained with the brush finish?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed concrete pad for the fire department as a brushed concrete that's I assume is a reinforced concrete.
Yes, yeah.
Six inches to support, to support the, the trucks.
I'll second.
Six, with six inches, we, and that's this and in here, but that's that on the record. And Deb seconds?
Deb seconded.
Deb did, yes. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Eric, thank you.
Okay, do you need me to come back after or anything, or this is, or all set? All right, perfect. Thank you all for your time and your assistance.
It'd be the typical time period we stipulate is a year. So
It should be done before the first snowfall.
That's you got that timeframe. Wendy, Elizabeth, Jacob? Here?
Good morning. On the record, I'm George Felner from Felner Architects. I'm not Wendy Johnson. Wedding, so I'm here instead. So the project is at One Rose Lane, and I'm here on behalf of Elizabeth Chaser and Jake Russell, who are here with us. It's always nice to have a client with you, so you don't have to handle it all alone. So the lot is at the corner of the north, at the north edge of the historic district. As you know, this Boston Post Road and One Rose Lane is the address by my pointer. So here's Rose Lane, and here's the access driveway. The yellow is the existing house, the house and the garage. And the orange brown section is the addition. So this is in the RU, R U dash forty zone. I'm going to walk you through the project. The purpose really for the project was to expand the kitchen. The existing kitchen is very small, so it's going to be remodeled and expanded two feet out towards, towards the road. That's going towards the north. And to the right, we're expanding four foot eight in this area and then an additional six feet in this area, which gives it a nice open kitchen with a breakfast nook. And then also reworks the entrance on the side instead of facing the driveway. One of the interesting parts of this house is that the, the front of the house is facing Austin Post Road. But the real functional front where people enter is in the back, this side. So we wanted to somehow reorient anyone coming in to come in over here with this path in the back rather than being attracted to the kitchen entrance. So in effect, those kinds of things were handled in this type of a scheme. The addition itself is 158 square feet. So it's a rather small one story addition. And there's also going to be a new deck, which is 53 square feet. So you walk up a few steps, deck, and then the entrance into the, into the kitchen area. There's also an existing hatch that is presently here and will be shifted out so that we can accommodate the addition.
A basement hatch?
Basement hatch. And I'll show you when we finishes, this, this is just a little more of that. Here's that hatch, uh, to visually block that, we're going to expand the, we're not grass plantings. And then you'll see a photograph in a minute that will show you where, you know, what that looks like. But this is it really here. Like you'll see a photograph of the house. So that'll be expanded to be in front of the hatch, so we could visually blocking it. An addition on the wood deck, it's a wood, it's gonna be built out of wood, get a built in bench.
Get them to work.
Yeah.
And a new, uh, blue stone walk, which looks like this, will be in this area here. So that's going to replace the concrete that's there now, the concrete slide, blue snow with some ornamental flower beds, miniature stores such as this. This is a real man, where the landscape. So I mentioned, this is what the house looks like now. You can see the ornamental grasses, which is expanded. And basically, you know, we went through a series of iterations just to determine what technical form this addition should have without, in effect, dominating or overtaking the, the, the house, which is a 1956 gate. So essentially, the formality, the integrity of that cake is going to be sustained as the primary evolves. And the addition serves as a secondary subservient role, almost looking like it's a torch. Those are closed, and that's how we detail it. Look at the plasters on the, the trim work on the ends. So it gives us that sort of a subtle feeling that it, it looks like it was meant to be there, not just thrown on here as an addition. The roof will be a continuation of the asphalt shingled roof, just basically matching. I believe Wendy dropped off some samples she should have somewhere.
Yep.
And the roof's actually the siding will also match the existing facade of the house. The elevation, so here's, here's the, um, the north elevation, which is facing Austin Post Road. So there's the bay window, which is part of the dining area. And then this is, this is what you see in effect from the front of the road. On the east side, which is facing the parking lot, here's, here's the addition. And there's the existing house beyond, there'll be a wood fence that also matches what's there now. And then two wood posts like pillars that essentially say this is the entry pathway to the, to the, the main, the main door. Just in the back. The south elevation, this is the main door that I just mentioned. Here, here's the path coming along like this. And then the opposite west elevation looks like that, and you really won't see much of the addition at all. For the finishes, the, as I've mentioned, they're going to match those there now. Uh, wood trim and dentil molding, as you see in these photographs of the existing house and garage. Would also have aluminum gutters and downspouts matching what's there. The windows will be Marvin Ultimate Wood Double Hung and Casement Authentic Divided Light. And the door, the one door that's being added is a Marvin Ultimate Wood and Glass Entry Door. The wood fence, um, which is, this is what's there now, so that's, you know, looked like that. And then these are what, these are the detailing for the, those wood posts that I mentioned, planking the entry to the pathway. And then finally, the wrought iron, it rails for the new stair at the wood deck. Again, matches what's there along with the polite fixture, which will have the down cast. So and there's a lot of implications, but I try to make it concise so you get a good flavor and understanding of what, what we're proposing. A lot of thought went into, it's a very small project, but still had a lot of decisions to be made.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Thank you. And your colleague also gave a wonderful presentation last month. And so we had a, a good overview coming in, which is, is always helpful. Chance to clear up questions then. Um, just picky things for my clarification. What is powder coating on an iron?
It's finished, it's just an iron, it makes, it's just, it gives it a protective layer.
Okay, but it's still gonna be black, black. Excuse me. And you talked about fence, fence posts or posts, where are they?
These?
Yeah.
Yes, so that, I'll show you in a quick flight. Can't see, it's around over here on the land. It's right here. So here's, here's the addition, here's the wood deck. This is the blue stone pathway with landscaping, and the two posts are right here. This is actually brick on the, on the floor grounds, but it's not a wall, you can just walk right over there.
And so the posts are funk, funk, just decorative or functional?
They're, they're, they're not, they're not holding up anything, but they're basically a mark of entry. So if you didn't have that there, it would be sort of ambiguous, where do you, where do you go?
I see.
So that was
And the height, height of those? The height of those?
Uh, three feet.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, cellar hatch, that's a Bilcomb, and that's state.
It's going to be shifted. That dashed.
Right.
Yeah, it's going to be moved because presently, this dashed line is the edge of the existing wall.
Okay.
Right here. Actually, if you look at I'm painting, see it, it's right behind me here.
Okay.
But that's, that's where the wall is. Since we're pushing out, we have to expand out and relocate that opening. So we're just basically shifting it out. So it's moving four and a half feet
Okay.
That direction.
So the same, it's the same hatch? Good. Other comments? Any comments from anyone in the audience? There, is there a motion concerning the C of A?
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented. A second?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, and thank you all for a very, very thorough presentation. I think it's gonna be great, great pride.
Great additions.
As someone who's expanded their kitchen, you'll love it.
Once we get through the asphalt.
Yes, yes, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. You believe it. Mary?
Mary Seidner, you come.
Thank you. Again, Mary and and Bob.
Hi.
Oh, I was just saying, we're astounded, we're running ahead of schedule.
Glad I came early.
Here, we may as well proceed.
So our renovation project is complete. And the reason we're here today is because we would like to install some fencing around the rear of our office building around the H B A C units. Um, a very teensy portion of that fence will be visible from Lime Street, just the one corner. And on the, I see that you've got my packet and the pictures are not in color, but there's a tiny cone that I, orange cone that I put there, see, on the corner where you would see it.
Do you back onto the school?
Uh, there's a sidewalk.
So that's a public way, so it's, it's statute says if it's visible from any public way, so it's not just Lime Street.
It backs onto the, to the other building behind it and the playground, right?
Right.
Oh, yeah, this fence would be behind the main building on Lime Street, but in front of the other buildings there. So it's not all the way back by the middle school.
No, no, I know that.
In the center of the property.
Visible from
The parking lot.
There might be, there's a passageway there, maybe.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Parts of it's visible, so good that you're here.
Okay, so I did bring one picture that's in color. And the little orange cone, I don't know if you can see, pass that around that cone is the one, is the corner of the fence, that's the portion that you
Right.
potentially see from there.
Does the fence turn back to the house or does it?
It, it's gonna go in a U shape just around the
So it does, it does, the U shape, so it turns back to the
It would go from this corner out over to that corner, yeah. It's just enclosing that area, so it stays.
One unit out further than the other, or is it just the photo?
No, they're both, uh, I mean, they're very close to each other, yeah.
It just looks like one is
I think that there's a, like an inch height difference between the two. Yeah, so yeah, it would just be enclosing those two units to protect them and keep kids from climbing on them and all that good stuff. And protect the visibility.
Is there gonna be a gate or something for maintenance on either side?
It says there's a gate on the side by the driveway, by the parking lot.
Which would be by the trash fence.
Oh, on the trash side, okay, got it.
And what's the design of the fence?
The fencing would be board on board, which is similar to the fencing that we already have around the trash. So it would match the
It'd match this.
Match the fencing, it would be a four foot height instead of a six foot height, yeah.
Oh, right.
Yeah, right, it would be a four foot height just to cover the height and the visibility of the A C units and stay below the windows.
Okay.
The trash fence is six feet to hide the visibility of the trash recycling.
And the same spacing and
Yeah, yeah, it's, yep. And then we hope to put some bushes and pretty landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So is this the six foot fence that we're going to match, is that? Yes, that's the style of fencing, it would just be a four foot height, yeah.
A cedar.
Cedar, correct, yeah.
And then the ink fairy shrubs, okay.
Other, other? Other, other questions? Comments? There are motion to approve the C of A. Carolyn?
I move we approve the C of A as submitted for the Fine Use Services Bureau.
Second?
Second.
Deb seconds? Any comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you for your thorough presentation. Just a question, couple of questions before you. I, I think I'm the one who prompted Martha to ask a question about the, the, the fence. And I was confused, the, the, the.
It's not their fence.
Oh, it's not theirs?
No.
Okay, so it's the neighbors.
The neighbors.
Okay, so we'll investigate that, okay, we had a question about fence that turns out to be on your neighbors.
Yes.
Okay, I want to say too that. Meeting of nostalgia. It's so nice to see the little lending library that we approved a few years ago.
And the landscaping in that area has been managed by the Duck River Garden. The Duck River Garden Club has taken us on as a municipal site to do the landscaping and gardening.
Great.
They love and everybody loves, it's been beautiful.
Yeah, it's really.
That Little Free Library was a project of a Girl Scout troop.
Right.
Those girls are all now in college, but. The Girl Scout leader also uh, is a leader for her younger sister's troop and so they have adopted it and they come once a month, someone's in charge for the month and. Organizes the books and cleans it up, so it's.
Really great.
Nice project.
Fantastic.
The, the last thing I wanted to mention is, do you ever have occasion to put out temporary signs?
Occasionally when there's an event coming up, we have us, one of those sandwich board on wheels things that we might put out during the renovation we did. But that was just to direct people how to get, find the main door, but it's not often.
Well, we, we have, um, per our statute, we. No differentiation between temporary and permanent sign. To approve temporary signs, which can be onerous if somebody's got more than one event, so we've devised a. Uh, a procedure to have you come in. Uh, or have any organization come in and sort of approve and advance a style location of temporary sign. Just to make sure that, that signals are, are straight. We do, I said, I, we, the town does at present have a problem with, with the sandwich board sign. They're not allowed under the zoning regs.
Okay, are there examples of approved sign designs or?
Yeah, I mean.
Been struggling with it, the musical masterwork sign is a good one.
Okay.
Cause it's not a plastic, you know, it's sort of.
So for example, sometimes when we have events like Halloween is coming up and we do a kids Halloween activity in the back area. And we normally like to put a sign that at least points people back there, so if we were to do something like that, we'd like to. We could make a permanent sign that we use every single year, which is approved, so we just have to plan for that ahead of time, so if there's.
That's what we're hoping will happen, that people who have recurring events will, like TV, you know, the library has book sales. And I mean, there's certain ones we all are familiar with.
Yeah, if we have annual type things.
I saw one this weekend at the Lime Academy, event parking with an arrow.
Event, I saw it.
I mean, is that okay or not okay?
No, it's a sandwich board.
It's a sandwich board, okay.
The same kind of.
Idea, just trying to get, make it easy for the institutions, but also fall within, right.
Yeah. And uh, you know, again, our goal is not to be unduly burdensome, but we have a statute to comply with. And uh, it, it, it would be good to, again, just have a. A, a, a session, since you're nonprofit, there's no fees, it's just the burden of coming in.
There's quite a few nonprofits in the historic district and the executive directors, we meet regularly just to get together. To talk about various issues, so possibly we could organize some kind of meeting where someone could come and explain what, what the new. Yeah.
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay, I'd be happy to help set that up.
We sent out last year, um. A notice about the, the signage guidelines that summarize this, but these things go, there's.
Sure, but I think a conversation with questions would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we can make that happen.
Terrific. And then for us moving forward, so if we have specific signs that say certain things that we would use over the years. If we were to come up with a, basically a, an image of each one of those for approval, then we'd be able to, okay.
Or frame, you know, it's kind of.
Right, a frame with an interchangeable type thing or something.
Yeah, I mean, some of it's, some of it's so basic, it almost doesn't need to be said, but it does because. For example, one organization posted a, a sign that over. Hung a sidewalk and posed a bit of a risk to, to cyclists and just sort of, you know, let's be clear about where this is going and.
Okay.
What it's gonna look like. That would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's no problem.
Alright.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Are you here for Erica?
I am.
We're running ahead, but come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Holden Block again and uh, here on Erica's behalf, she couldn't make it today, but. Talking about two items, the fence in the back of the garage and the um. Also the driveway apron. So I did bring some plans for the uh.
Yeah, why don't we uh. Take them one at a time.
Sure.
Talk about the fence, the fence first.
Yeah, so the fence is planned to be. Entirely in the back of the garage, uh, six feet tall. And then it'll run just past the length of the back of the garage towards the middle of the house. And the idea is to make it the same cedar cladding as the garage itself. So that it essentially blends in with the back of the garage. Uh, so I have some elevations here as well. So from the, the Maple Lane side. You would see. You know, this extension with a gate to get in for the, um, right, here's the propane tank. So when they would come fill the propane tank that need access here. This would also be the gate access to all the pool equipment, the HVAC. Um, anything else in that area, so it would completely shield all of the mechanicals back there.
But they're all going into the same, same line, the pool and the HBAC, it's all in one, it's all there?
Yeah, it's all in a, a linear, um, behind the garage here, but that. That wall actually sits two feet back.
Yes.
Setback.
Yeah, you can see, um, I don't know.
Maybe I'll help pull.
Yeah, everybody can see it, it gets.
You can describe the locations, everybody can see it.
Yeah, so this is, this is the back of the garage facing the Duck River and um. I know, that's the.
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant there and um. So the, the area where the arrow is pointing is the Maple Lane side of the fence.
What's that length, is that twenty five feet or?
Uh, it's the length of the back of the garage, the, uh, it's scaled, but the uh, the garage itself is twenty four feet deep. So it would be about twenty eight feet. And the, the reasoning for the jog is just to give the HVAC a little bit more.
Well, I was kinda curious why you extended this part.
Yeah, so the HVAC ad sits right at the edge of the, the garage, so. It'd be nice just to give it room for people to work in there and she, you know, wants to shield it from. From the house side as well, so that. You know, that's all just contained within that area.
Is generator in there too?
She is doing a generator plug, so there's no permanent backup generator. So that would also be in that area, so she could wheel the generator in there and run it behind the fence, which would be.
Not a fixed.
Which would be great, um, because it would normally be stored in the garage and just wheel around, so.
Now, is there gaps between this, those slats or is?
There, uh, there about a quarter inch gap between the slats, so.
Okay.
You know, it gives enough for.
Enough air.
Air movement, but not for visibility.
So it, it literally reads it's the same siding?
Yeah, so it'd look like just an extension without a roof, essentially.
When you mentioned the generator plug, I, do you mean a transfer switch?
Yes.
Yeah, it says fence slats to be the same material or it's used on the garage.
There you go. And she. Yeah, she has no plans to put a permanent generator in at this time, so.
Does the, um, does the finish of the, of this, of the siding fade over time or does it? Because it would be more appropriate to the historic district if it were less obvious and obtrusive.
It's completely um, unsealed, so it will weather silver as time, silver gray as time goes on. And um. The, yeah, on the garage itself, it's getting the same cap as the, the roof of the house, so it'll be silver. That kind of gray silver as well, so.
And, and that's going to weather as well, the garage?
Yes, the garage and the fence will both weather together. They'll be the same, um, D and better cedar product, so.
Will there be any plantings around this or?
None planned at the moment, um. But, you know, I think.
None planned around the garage or around the fence?
Uh, around the fence, there is an area in front of the garage that. She plans to use eventually for garden or. Um, she has plans for an espalier, except, you know, it's down the road at this point, so. She'll have to get approval for that, I think, right?
And will there be landscaping also along the front of the house, the.
Uh, there's.
Facing side?
They're currently, uh, as of last week. Our um, blue hide ranges across the whole front of the house. So. It definitely hides the house a little more and softens the front, front facade.
But of course, those are deciduous, so in the winter months.
Yeah.
There'll be nothing, sort of, uh, like.
Just, just the sticks of the, yeah.
So could I suggest that you might recommend to, um, to Erica that she consider something. Landing along the front of the house that would remain green during the winters to keep, to maintain that softening.
I can, I can mention it to her, yes. Um. Because as you know, there's plenty of lawn there, so I don't know if there's, you know, she could do some kind of tiered plantings. Um, but I'll.
Perhaps repeat the espalier as well on the.
Hmm.
On the house.
I'll, I'll mention it.
Great, that would be very nice on the garage and espalier.
Um, and just to get, so we have it in the, in the record, you've got the height. Of the fence, it's six feet off the rear of the garage, but um, can we say not to exceed twenty eight feet in length?
We can say that.
I mean, would that be accurate?
Yes. I think so.
Um, is there a motion to approve the fence? Uh, that will cover the HVAC equipment, propane tank and pool equipment as specified in the. Well, I'm speaking, I'll make the motion to approve that as submitted with the additional stipulation that. Length of the fence not exceed twenty eight feet.
How many feet?
Twenty eight.
Which is on the, that's the drawing.
It's on the drawing, it's just, it's the length of the garage plus a little bit extra.
Right.
To accommodate need to work around the HVAC.
And, and I think the align, the setback here is important, so. If, if we're stating it as the drawing, there needs to be a statement, I think in your motion that it's per the plans. Maybe that's implied.
Well, sure, I'm happy to, to do that, I just didn't see that drawing in, in.
Is that not in the submission?
Uh, I think I.
Have a copy of.
I think I submitted it electronically, but uh, we can call this the.
Officials.
Official, okay.
Yeah.
Plan.
Yeah, cause I think the setback's important to.
There are second?
A second.
Seconds? Further discussion? Any comments from the audience? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, motion carries? Thank you very much. Um, and now we move on to the driveway. Apron.
So the driveway apron, I was not here for the last meeting, but she. Um, said that a suggestion for, um. A full Belgian block apron was made and so she actually had. Um, a few quotes made for that and uh, it was quite expensive. And so, um, to reduce the kind of budgetary hardship of that, we thought of a couple other ideas. That, um, we wanted to bring to the table and one was. To do an asphalt apron but chip seal it. Um, and then line the edges with, um. So it would have a, a curb of Belgian block up the edge of that apron. Instead of doing the full apron, it would be a chip seal to match the, the topping of the rest of the driveway. And then Belgian blocks just to the fence line, so it'd go to the, um, sidewalk. Just past the sidewalk up to the current line of the fence.
The present sidewalk is, has been cracked from the construction?
Yes, the, the plan is to, um, fix that when we.
It extends beyond the, the driveway a little bit.
Uh, yeah, so we'll, I guess we'll have to go to the whatever expansion joint before the next. You know, piece that we've, um, broken. Uh, but the plan is to, to fix that as we go.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's town property, isn't it, that goes on the, on the opposite side of the sidewalk?
It is, I believe it's town property too, just beyond the fence, actually, the fence is on the town property.
Oh.
As per the, the, uh, survey.
So, does the town replace, since it's town property, does the town replace the sidewalk?
I'm not sure how that works, I think that's a public works question because.
Right.
I think if we're. The ones affecting it, I'm guessing that we're the ones who need to fix it, um. Unless there's an allowance of some sort by the town.
Yeah.
For repair when you're adding a driveway, I'm not sure, I, I know that, um, Jeff Stevens pulled the, um. The driveway permit quite a while ago and got approval for location and. Um, material based on what you guys approved, I think.
There's a lot of uni, well, I mean, it's both uniform and, and not really, the side of the driveway aprons on this side. Of Lime Street, because this side of Lime Street has the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so. A, a lot of the aprons going right down to this, from the sidewalk to the street. Are made of the same thing that the sidewalk is.
Yes, they're concrete.
Yeah.
Which we are also open to.
There, there's that, and then you're proposing a chip seal kind of thing, which is going to be on the other side too, I mean, on the actual driveway.
So it would be, um, I guess that's where the discussion happens because we.
Right.
We are responsible for from the road to the sidewalk and then from the sidewalk to. Um, her property line and the, you know, beyond, we plan to go transition to the double track. Um, gravel driveway that we had discussed previously.
So would that gravel match whatever covering is the chip seal?
That was the. That was the idea, so that from the road all the way to the house would be the same material.
And there are, are examples, I took a bunch of pictures, it doesn't matter, but there, there are some, some driveways along here. That are like that, that have it sort of a chip seal, not with the Belgian block. I didn't see, I don't think there's one of those.
Okay.
But, but, but with the chip seal. Apron down to the street. That matches the chip seal. Side of the side. So there's precedent for all these things, really.
How is the chip seal the same as the? S- gra, the stone, I'm confused.
So they use the, as the um, as the top.
They're doing chip seal all the way up on the two.
So, no, you get to choose the topping for the chip seal. So you get to choose whatever piece of gravel you want to use to impregnate into the um oil. And so you can extend that as a topping over the, the um base for the rest of the driveway. So that material can match.
You don't have drawing of this at this point.
Uh, no, I submitted a photo of the chip seal. And the, the Belgian block on the curving is, you know. An appeal to. You know, put it, put it there instead of the whole apron.
Line the whole driveway, or is that just within the chip seal area?
It would, it would go to the fence line.
It would not line the whole driveway.
Has the actual Belgian block. That goes right to the road has just been not, you know, but there's no sign. At the forwarding house, right? That's, so that's not like.
So it's concrete sidewalk, chip seal from sidewalk to fence. The chip seal's finished in a stone that matches the stone that's gonna be the two lanes from the.
Will match the chip seals.
So the other way to do it would be concrete to the. All the way to the fence line to match the sidewalk. And then go transition from there to stone as well. It is.
The chip seal, right?
That looks, that looks a little commercial.
Sidewalk. But, but you're kind of sort of.
And that's.
Dressing it up a little bit.
That's.
A Belgian lock.
Yes, just to line up to the.
It's, the stone is pressed in to, to it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So your, your C of A as written doesn't. All for the Belgian block siding.
No, I think.
But that's, that's something you could do.
It's something we can do, for sure. The only, you know, well, there's a consideration of where the edging meets the sidewalk that. I'm a bit unsure of because of, you know, you don't wanna have a tripping hazard at the sidewalk.
No, it would need to be set.
Set down to grade, I think, at that point.
Right.
But it would, it, it would essentially just be an edging for the driveway.
Just make it up. Dress it up.
Hey, any, any further?
If that's what we wanna do.
Discussion.
I have just one question.
Yes.
The uh, you said that the uh, this. The property line is set back a little bit from um, the fence.
Yes.
So, I have concerns about maintaining that fence, because it's kind of iconic for that.
Yeah, it's a very iconic.
Um, does she accept responsibility for that?
I. I'm not sure, I can't, I don't know that I can speak on her behalf on that.
I don't think the town is gonna maintain it.
No, that's the, and she's, you know, she has to look at it, drive through it.
Someone was working on it this weekend. Sanding it.
Henning was sanding and painting his portion.
Yeah.
But not hers.
Um, so I think that's, her plan was to get the pieces back in place. And we just have to find the right person to do that, because they're. Quite brittle and very heavy, so we ha, I think we have to get some substructure in there. To support them, because I don't know that they will on their own anymore. Um, the landscapers actually leaned. One panel against the, you'll notice this, the fence from the corner to the driveway. Is off right now, because they leaned one piece against it and it cracked and fell over, so. I think a, a fence restoration is in order at the end of the project, when, you know, we're done. In and out with construction vehicles.
Further discussion? Comments from the audience? Is there a motion to approve the driveway apron as submitted? With the stipulation that between the road and sidewalk. And between the sidewalk and the fence, there'd be Belgian block sightings. Elevation elevated in a, in a way, in a manner to be safe for pedestrians.
And filled with chip seal.
Well, yes, that's specified here, that did, there's a chip seal.
Does it say the chip seal matches the stone?
It, it says s- s- chip seal apron to match the material used to top the final driveway.
Um, John, can I just clarify something, because I feel like there's a lot of different materials. There's gonna be grass, there's gonna be Belgian block, there's gonna be chip seal, there's the sidewalk, there's the road. But I'm, and, and offense, but I'm, uh, I think you're lacking showing me or anyone else. What it's really gonna look like. That's my concern, because, you know, I'm trying to do, where's the sidewalk, where's the road? Where are you starting your chip seal, where are you starting your grass, where exactly is your Belgian block going to be? I just need more information.
Okay.
Because the house itself is not historic. So, I feel like this is the entry, this is pretty important.
So a, a drawing would be helpful?
I think so.
Before we finally make a decision.
Okay. And, yeah, we can put a drawing together with specifications.
Okay, this, this application is not dated or signed.
Which one is that? This one, right, yeah, um, Erica needs to sign this, she needs to sign it.
Okay. Yeah, she was out of town this weekend and.
Well, um. We could hold it over to, to, to next week and um.
Next month.
Next month, alright.
Which is the tents, by the way.
Because we, we obviously need to, we can't approve something that hasn't been signed.
Sure.
And get her to sign it and, and request it.
A drawing be submitted?
Be submitted and, and. Actually, i- if this could be amended, just for the record, to include the reference to where exactly the Belgian block will be placed. The height issue that we talked about.
Okay.
So we do have, we do have time before there's action taken, so let's uh.
Okay.
Just hold that over, the next meeting is actually on November tenth instead of the third, because of election.
That works.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
You got the, the fence, the fencing for the mechanicals is, is approved.
Okay.
John, we also need to extend the other C of A.
Thank you, yes, your original C of A.
Over a year old.
Expired a few days ago.
Okay.
There are motion to extend the uh C of A. It was approved on October seventh of last year, expiring. On Wednesday.
I'll make a motion to extend the C of A for seven phone on the street.
Alright, we'll second.
Uh, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, no extensions? You're extended, you can keep working.
Did you request an image of the chip steel, uh, chip seal and stone, in other words? Not just a drawing, but do we wanna see what the material?
That would be very helpful.
How it relates?
This is what it's going to look like?
I think Erica sent, I think Erica.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so in that presentation, just a couple images, shows the stone, shows the. The chip seal and the Belgian block.
Okay.
Concrete, there'll be concrete next to it.
Yes.
So all those, to your point, all the materials coming together, how does it work, yeah?
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Right, thank you. The kitchens. Um, eighty five Lime Street, anyone here? Joshua and Peter.
I think we're next.
You skipped Russ.
Skip, you skipped.
Oh, wait. Sorry, there's one other item. I wonder. I'm sitting there looking, I'm sitting there looking at Jill and going.
Are, are you here for the old lime in? No, no.
Okay, so. Uh, Russ and Jill are here, as I understand it, to just give an update about what they're thinking. Concerning their house repair and, and redesign, so we don't have today a formal C of A.
That's right, that's right, and this is David Noah with three sixty designs, is working with us on our project. Um, I'll just give a quick overview and I'll turn it over to David, uh, I'm, I'm Jill. Go with him, I haven't met you, um, as many of you might be aware, we had a small fire in our house uh this summer. And we're putting Humpty Dumpty back together again, and as we are doing that and kind of realizing. The invasiveness of that project, we thought it would be a good idea to go ahead. And move forward on a kitchen remodel that we've been planning for a long time. And the idea is that we would like to take the kitchen out of the main part of the house. Which is currently in an unfortunate location, it blocks a, an old fireplace, it blocks an entrance to the living room. And pull it out and make a small addition off the L of the house, the L itself. Has a historic fireplace that we um restored several years ago, it's a big stone fireplace with a beehive oven. And originally, we thought we'd put the kitchen in the L, um, but once we had the fireplace restored and we realized how nice it was to have. You know, more of a visual access, we didn't wanna cram a kitchen in there. So we thought adding a small addition that would be uh representative of maybe a porch that would have been added at some time. And, and design it in such a way that it looks like we've enclosed that old porch. Uh, made a lot of sense for the flow of the house, and then in terms of the design principles. We are picking up the design elements from another addition of the house, which is the eighteen thirty room. Right off the side of the main house, that's adjacent to this, and just be taking the architectural details around. So with that.
Yeah, so I can kind of walk you through.
Yeah.
Um, so the site plan here shows uh the new addition portion here.
Could I request, could you possibly move it closer?
Yep, sorry.
Do you wanna put it here where I'm shooting?
Yeah, actually.
Thank you.
No, better?
Yeah, but till.
Till it, I, I don't need to see it.
Thank you.
So yeah, this is the existing footprint of the house, and it comes on here, our addition portion is in this location. Which is in the back of the house, this is route one here. We're proposing a, a three hundred square foot addition here, which would include the kitchen and a mudroom. And then off of an existing sitting area, it's a forty six square foot addition to make that room more usable. Um, and we'd have French doors going out to an existing patio. So these are the two new spaces that we're proposing. Um, and then also that we'd have a buried propane tank. Out in the gardens, new gardens uh proposed, and then a, in a stone wall that wraps the driveway. Um, so a really nice, you know, planted area, screening of the uh HVAC units. And then a Bilco door here, which the plantings would help screen that as well.
Sorry, what was that last door?
Uh, this one here?
No, no.
The Bilco door, so a basement access, yeah.
It's currently in access. But, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then this, the intention here is all this planting would screen that.
Right.
Bilco door, and the HVAC units would have a screening fence type design.
And your entrance would be into the mudroom?
Yep, so really, right now, when you come to the house, it's a little ambiguous to where you go. The front door's uh way around, around here, which is really not used on a daily basis. Um, and the eighteen thirties room located here has an entry. But it's not really obvious, it's not usable, especially with the garage being here. So the idea is this mudroom entry piece is more utilitarian. Um, and as you park, you can walk up and come in, take your shoes off, so it's much more functional. Um, the way the house is actually used right now. This is a blown up door plan. Um, one portion, I'll start over here, this is that eighteen thirties room, the older portion. The idea is to open up this existing case opening, um, and this is the existing kitchen. So this whole area becomes part of the house again, right now it was very compartmentalized, detached from the house, so. We've included this back into the home, and then this is that enlarged seating area. It's a really nice space with um French doors that go out into that patio. Now, as you go into that older section from seventeen hundreds, correct? From the seventeen hundreds, this is that rebuilt fireplace, which is beautiful. Um, and we're proposing adding ten foot six to the house. So this is that addition portion with the new kitchen and the entry mudroom. Um, so as you can see, this space becomes much more usable and functional, we did get, it really helps kind of tie the house together. So you guys see elevations? So from an aesthetic standpoint, this is that north elevation, so these are the driveways. Right now, when you park here, it's a little ambiguous that this is the front door. Well, that's not the front door, this is side door, the front door is all the way around the front there, so this is our new entry location. We're bringing this aesthetic across, which is a flat roof with bedlam moldings and crowns, and we would match that same profile. And bring that um, that same aesthetic to this portion of the house. The idea really is to make this feel like a enclosed screen porch, so I could have been there for a long time. Um, having engaged columns and then this um rewindow kind of repetition, which is very consistent, sorry.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but so, this is the addition.
Yeah, so that's looking this way. Yep. So this, this portion's the addition. And that's that, that's this mudroom here, so you're looking on that direction at that side elevation, this is all existing. So that's this portion of house.
And what is that, where there's the three panels or windows, the, is that like the screen right there, the one in the middle that I see, like?
This is the Bilco door.
Oh, okay, okay.
We know, we're gonna make that more accurate for the next showing, um, but these are the windows in the kitchen. And the counter heights right up at that window sill height, so when you're at the stove, you have a view out, and you have the sink, you have a view out. But, you know, we really worked hard to get this sort of repetition working well in the proportioning. Um, and then I'll show you, and this is that, this is the bay further back, that sitting room with the new French doors coming off. To this existing patio here.
Uh, that's the east side, east.
This is, yes, east side, yeah, and this would be a copper roof. Um, in keeping with the existing copper gutters and different accents that are already existing. So this is now on the south side, so we were looking this way in the east, that's that bump out. So this would be the copper roof portion, and then coming out of the kitchen, um, eating area, we. Keep this same aesthetic, this is an existing door with a really nice kind of federal style. Um, detailing, we would keep that same detailing on the new French doors. To kind of tie the different architectures that are on the home into the additions. And that's basically where, where we are, um, Marvin windows with five eight simulated divided lights. Um, dark sky, light fixtures, um, painted wood platforms, everything would be wood, I would say. Um, these, right now, we're looking at these lantern style, um, light fixtures. Um, these, right now, we're looking at these lantern style, um, light fixtures. Yeah, we're trying to keep it, obviously tie everything together, but keep it minimal as possible to accomplish what we needed.
The part that's seen from the road, of course, the front of the house, none of this is seen when you're looking straight on. You, you see the front and then you see the, the addition. There's a glancing view as you're coming uh, towards town, um, on the road. You can see kind of the, where the mudroom is, the entrance.
Yeah.
Right? And so we're tucking the, trying to tuck the, the Bilco door and then AC units in that corner that's not visible from the road. Um, and then on the other side, you don't see that at all from there. Really, that little piece, um, yeah, you can kind of see that glancing view from Lime Street as you drive down. Yeah, yeah.
Beautiful.
Um, that's, I heard it beautiful.
I think you're gonna have to have a party when you're done.
Yeah.
H D C party. I like, not that it, not that it has anything to do with us, but the idea that you're returning your, the kitchen that you're now using to the flow of the house.
Yeah.
It's really wonderful.
It, it, when you go in the house, that eighteen thirty room we keep referring to has two arched openings. One stills functioning, the other one was closed off. I have no idea why they chose to do that, but it really, I think it's gonna make a big difference to move that kitchen.
And the, the original kitchen was where the old fireplace was with the beehive oven. So the idea is to to put the kitchen back there, but, but not really. And it, the, the modern part, the, the old part of the kitchen will be there, but the modern part is the addition that we're doing.
Yeah.
The usable part, yeah.
That you're able to maintain and keep that old section.
Yeah, really.
Exactly, yeah, so we're trying to do.
What's your, what's your timetable?
Fast. Well.
Whatever Russ tells us.
Yeah, whatever Russ says. Um, we're, we're coming back in November, um, to seek our C of A on this. Um, but, uh, separately, our niece has decided to get married and she wants to get married in our yard in a year. So everybody's on a high alert notice that we need to get this done as quickly as possible, so.
And I'll recuse myself in November, obviously, so, to make that statement clear.
Well, thank you for the update. It's, it's always helpful just in case there are any questions or
Yeah.
or concerns.
Do you have any suggestions for next month or?
No, I mean, just in that, you don't have to explain about the, in the formal C of A, as Russ knows, about the internal flow.
Okay.
Because our concern is just exterior structure.
Correct, okay.
We'll provide some images. I, I liked that last presentation you
Yeah.
photographed, so, yeah.
Yes.
Great.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joshua and Peter, we're, we're one whole minute late.
Pretty impressive folks with us as well.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna know from our architect's office. You wanna get this? Is it possible to connect to the screen here?
You can figure it out. You can sign into the meeting? Is, is the meeting up and running? Is the meeting on?
Press any button except for the power button.
Nobody connects.
Oh, we'd have to reconnect it. Cause if, if we could get the meeting back up, then they could sign in and maybe share.
Does it say, just hit me, I mean, does it?
Or maybe there's a, there's a link there.
Except for the power.
This woman who's sleeping. This will be nice, it's up there.
Meeting doesn't run. So yeah, I guess we, if there's a way that we can get the
I haven't seen any of that.
There is an HDMI connection.
Oh.
If you want to try to do that.
Yeah, that's what, that if we have an HDMI. Yes, have a full TV. Well, maybe not for the Browns.
Yeah.
Sure, I think so. Yep.
It was a last go getting yesterday. To call my daughter.
Yeah.
Wow, there you go. See that? Amazing.
All right, uh, as with the last, uh, presentation, this is not a C of A application, but just an introduction to, to future plans and ideas and thank you for, thank you for, for doing this. It's very, very helpful to have this kind of preliminary discussion.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, thank you for making time today. I don't know, Joshua, if you wanna lead us off with introductions or?
I would love to. So, uh, Joshua Campbell Torrance, I'm the executive director of the Florence Griswold Museum. We're delighted to be here today to, um, update the commission on some exciting plans for the future of the museum. Um, and we're really ve- very thrilled to be working with, um, both Noel and Conrad, uh, who have put together a really, I think, compelling plan and vision for our future. We've gone through a real deliberative planning process to get us to this point, including all kinds of market analysis. Um, a very comprehensive, long-range master plan. Uh, and we have spent many, many hours with, uh, a board committee uh, and it was community stakeholders to get us to this, this spot. So as part of this process, we have spoken to many, many people in the community, and it's been a real iterative process. Uh, and we've enjoyed that, uh, a great deal. And we're just absolutely thrilled to be able to give you this preview and get feedback and your thoughts and ideas and suggestions as we move forward. We're really appreciative that you've taken time to, uh, to meet with us and hear about our, what we think is a compelling vision for the future of the institution. Right, Conrad?
Thank you. So I'm Conrad Lo, and this is Noel Murphy. We're with Omosello Architecture. We're a Boston-based firm. Um, Florence Griswold Museum brought us on in twenty twenty-four to be involved in the kind of reconceptualization of the master plan for Florence Griswold. So we've been involved for about a year now, a little bit more than a year. Um, we have developed a master plan and, um, sort of a, a, a strategy for moving forward that'll be broken into phases over many years. Um, it looks like we're in position. You can speak better than I can, but it looks like we're in position to move forward to phase one, which is a, a, a more modest, um, piece of a, of a, a broader vision. We're gonna share the full vision with you tonight or today. Um, the plan is to submit, uh, for approvals, the full vision, uh, in a month with, uh, the zoning commission. And we'll obviously probably go through a formal review with you at that point. But wanted to at least meet with all the folks a month in advance, give, you know, have informal conversations so we could get any feedback, uh, early on as we develop the final application. So with that, I'm gonna um, walk you through a couple of things here, if I can get this to work. Um, Noel, do you wanna, um, walk us through the, the kind of
Sure.
site strategy? And then we can, we can kind of go back and forth, cause I know you know the zoning pieces of it a little better than I do.
Sure, I mean, this is kind of very, um, basic information, but this is the Florence Griswold, um, property, which is that thick blue outline, which is comprised of actually a few zoning districts. The northern, northeastern section is, uh, residential. And the southeastern section is commercial, and I know that property was kind of split and then re-aggregated over time by the museum. Um, we're focused on the residential kind of half of the site with our master plan. Um, and this is the, as we understand it, the, um, the extents of the historic district, um, which extends into the Florence Griswold site to include the Florence Griswold House and the Education Center Barn Building. Uh, there's other structures on the property that are not part of the, kind of the district boundary and are not, um, also, and Joshua can probably speak more eloquently to this than I, but in terms of what's listed on the historical register, um, the newer buildings and the Huntley Brown House, um, are not, uh, contributing assets to that listing. Um, and then this is an aerial view looking across the property towards the Lieutenant River with the Florence Griswold House in the lower right-hand corner. Um, you can see the two barn buildings as you move across kind of up in the image. Then the Kribel Gallery. And beyond that is the Marshfield House, which is where Cafe Flow is, if you're familiar with, um, visits here. Most of our work is focused, I'm just gonna stand up easier, um, in, in this area of the site and, and making some renovations and additions to the Kribel building, uh, keeping the house and the barns as they are. Uh, and keeping also the Chadwick Studio in its location. So we're focused on kind of paving traffic circulation and kind of the visitor entry experience and how we can find ways to add gallery space to the museum building.
This is Huntley Brown, by the way, here, building, which is, I think, currently staffed.
That's right. Um, this might be a little bit more intelligible. It's just a, a site plan, um, with Lime Road down here, the Griswold House. Now you enter through a driveway that takes you right past the Kribel Gallery into a parking lot. And then you loop back on foot to, um, enter the gallery space um, through this sunken entrance, which is down, sorry, Joshua. And, and, and a ramp, um. These are, are two barn buildings that the museum uses, um. One focused on education, lots of school groups, summer camps use that space. The Landscape Center, um, is used by the garden club and is really open to the public in the nicer months of the year. The Huntley Brown House is now staff, um, although it's a very confusing building in terms of visitor arrival. Many people think that's the entrance and ticketing for the museum. And the Chadwick Studio, um, is, um, a historic studio building that is from the era of the painters that painted on this property that visitors can also kind of view. Um, slide. Um, we're looking at this work as being two phases, as Conrad mentioned. Um, and in the first phase, we're focused on starting to reroute traffic instead of bringing traffic through the center of the property, routing as much traffic as possible. We're directly to the parking lot. There's a lot of pedestrian movement between parking and the barns and throughout the property as you move from the Kribel Building where you get your ticket to the Florence Griswold House. So one of the goals of the master plan and, and phase one in particular, start, start thinking about how we take the car out of that experience. Um, then in terms of the building addition, we do have more, um, zoomed in floor plans. But there's an existing porch on the backside of the Kribel Building. Um, if you've visited, there's an outdoor terrace back here as well. We're planning to enclose that porch space and make it an interior gallery space. Um, and then there's a larger space here. That's an extension of the collections, um, volume on the south end of the building. That will become an education center. Right now, there's really no space within the museum, um, for a lecture or for a meeting of, you know, fifty or more people. And so this affords that, um, opportunity for programming. And it could also be a multipurpose space that functions as a gallery, depending on kind of the annual programming of the museum. Um, interestingly, I think that entry drive, the relocation, I think there was an old drive there, isn't there, right?
Yeah.
So. Um, as we enclose that back porch space, right now, there's doors in this opening that's near to you, they're closed and usually blacked out to keep the artwork protected, yeah, um, in the galleries. Um, but we're planning along that series of galleries to punch new windows where we have better light control, shades, um, so that at many times of day, we can create views between the interior of the building and the exterior. Um, I'd probably jump into the details of that kind of backing up in terms of conceptually, the, the largest goal of the project is to integrate the landscape, which was really the environment the painters were in and recording and what is displayed in the artwork in the museum. Um, link that with the gallery experience so that visitors know that they're not at just any museum, but a museum where there's a connection between the artwork and the landscape in which it was produced. Um, so we want to make that landscape more evident and part of the visitor experience. This is that, um, education multipurpose space here, showing it, um, as an exhibition space, um. But when it's not used for exhibitions, there are, um, opportunities with technology and projection screens to have events and lectures and even music in this space. Um, this is outside the building with the Marshfield House to your left. And here to our right is that enclosed porch with the education space that we were just looking at an interior shot of here to the right. Um, and we want to keep the building, you know, lower than the ridge line of Marshfield and the Kribel Building. We just, um, met last week with the Gateway Conservation Commission. I know they're very focused on kind of the impression and the view of the building from the river, and we're trying to be very modest on this side of the building. Um, phase two is a bit more ambitious in its approach to the landscape and restoring kind of a pedestrian uh, focused landscape in the center of the property. Um, so in phase two, we eliminate the driveway, the existing driveway that takes you, um, right in front of the Kribel Building entrance. That goes away entirely, so all particular traffic would use the new entry drive at that stage. We do have to in, in, address emergency access, so the existing driveway is going to be converted into something more um, kind of in the realm of a farm lane, um, something that feels like it's part of the landscape. And then that fire lane extends and kind of exits, exits out um, as reinforced turf, so it's not a paved surface. Uh, and what that allows us to do is to create a pasture at the center of kind of the visitor experience, um. To allow us to do that, the Huntley Brown House, which is the only existing structure that we plan to remove, um, does get shown as being removed. Um, that house is a historic house that was relocated onto this property, and the plan is to ideally have it disassembled and relocated elsewhere off-site. Um, in terms of the architectural improvements and additions, um, we're really creating a new entrance in this phase two. So all of this in blue is a new entrance with, um, ticketing, shop, support, support spaces like bathrooms and storage. Um, and that entrance is covered by a large roof, which creates an outdoor porch space for the public to use. Um, that could be just a space you pass through as you arrive at the building, but it could also support outdoor events, music, things of that nature. And it creates a nice relationship between this new lawn or pasture space and the building, um, where there's a nice flow of movement between the two.
Right now, you sort of walk down sort of like almost into like a hole to get into the main entrance. So this, this plan uh, proposes bringing the entrance up to the level of the, what's called, what we're calling the pasture, but it's the big lawn out in front of the Kribel. Um, it's worth pointing out this tree. This is, I think, a seedling of the char oak.
That's right.
Yep. And so this is, I think, a fifty-year-old tree. And so that, celebrating that as well and bringing that to the foreground of this new really pedestrian-friendly environment is, is what, what we'd like to do. We really want to connect visitors to this cultural landscape that, um, was so important to the painters that, uh, painted on this site a hundred years ago. And now with drop-off, uh, with the proposal that you'd come in on the entry drive and drop off here, it's really everything from here over now becomes kind of a park-like setting that visitors can enjoy without having to worry about, you know, delivery trucks coming in or, you know, cars coming back and forth in and out of there. So it's a, it's a, it's a massive transformation that is a visitor experience to to implement this plan.
Six hundred people yesterday for Beaufort Village. Um, not, that, that should sort of head counts at the front desk, not necessarily our ticket counts, I should say, not necessarily. Probably it was more like nine hundred to thousand yesterday. So our, our thinking here is, is really also about pedestrian safety and making sure that all the folks that come throughout the course of the year have a safe place to walk and traverse the property that, um, also puts them in that frame of mind and celebrates what's so special and wonderful about Old Line, which is our natural landscape. So, um, we're pretty excited. Old Lime, which is our natural landscape. So we're pretty excited that. It solves a pedestrian safety issue, but it's a real sentiment again. Return to this rural wonderful landscape.
Question. Presently, you walk down steps to get into the gallery. And how will that be addressed in the new plan? And how will handicap? People be able to access? That space.
Perfect timing. Yeah. So this is an existing photograph looking towards the entrance that you're referring to, which is sunken down a series of steps. Parking is just off the page here to the left. So if you if you arrive and park, you've got to walk down. Of a sloping pathway to the entrance and down either the steps or ramp to access the building. We're proposing bringing all of the grade. Up, so all of this in here will come up. So from parking to the entrance is a level surface. When you enter the building, there will be stairs and a lift for accessibility to the gallery level.
It's about a four and a half foot difference. It's not a full floor, but it, yeah, there is a that'll be. Negotiated inside as opposed to outside, so you won't be walking down. An icy slope slope walkway. It'll be all done inside.
Currently, from this scheme, from where you get dropped off to where you actually get into the building is just under fifty feet. The new proposal to cover the under, you know, to cover space, not fully inside, but covered space is sixty feet. So we're we're curious about this. So we did a study of cultural institutions around New England to understand what's the average length? That people have to walk. And we actually are in right square in the medium. For those keeping track at home, the longest distance in New England is Plymouth Plantation. If you're geeky like I am about museum stuff, two hundred and fifty feet is their their block. So. We we feel pretty good that we're sixty feet. But again, the key is you're not navigating that tricky grade. Right? You're coming in at the same grade as you're parking. And then. Again, just over overemphasized perhaps, but. You'll be amazed. Well, you probably not because you're you all come and enjoy the museum as much as we do. How many of us have driven? To parking and people are walking in the driveway?
Lots.
Lots, right?
Joshua, just to clarify, the the president access now when it's below grade, there is a ramp which provides handicap. Access, so that might be replaced by an elevator.
That's right. That's right. And again, our thinking emphasizing again, our thinking, which is. We would rather have people navigate that grade change in a controlled indoor environment. Than in an outside environment, right? So we think that's a that is a win. And then this is this is a great image because of the rain that you see that is on the road. So how many of you remember how many times our front? Lobby has flooded. And this will take care of that condition because all that rain comes right down that asphalt and we've had significant flooding in the past. That we've had to deal with. I've I've spent a lot of time with Amy, our wonderful curator, with a wet back. Backing him out carpet. So hopefully we won't have to do that anymore with this scheme. So this is a view from a similar vantage point to that existing conditions view that. At this point, we've driven into the property, the Florence Griswold House is just behind us to the right. To the left is the new entry drive that we're proposing. You can see the corner of it, but vehicles would would bend around to the left. And then straight ahead of us is the farm lane. So we're trying to do in this image is one. Take that asphalt driveway. Out of the view as you arrive on site. But we also want to kind of shelter a bit. The pasture and the the Kribel Gallery and the new addition from the Florence Griswold House. So the Florence Griswold House is still. Prominent and kind of the figurehead from the street. We've introduced in a couple of places. These gates, these farm gates. And there could be instances where this gate is fully open. If you want to encourage a lot of people to. Use that method of kind of moving onto the site, but typically I think would have. One one side closed, one open. So it's very clear that vehicles go left and signage would would assist with that. That this is a pedestrian. Path. Maybe go to the next image, Conrad, we can talk to more.
Is that your fire lane? So does he?
Yes. So in in an emergency. The gate would be fully open and a fire truck to traverse this way. You could also use it for, you know, when we have to do load in and load out of certain things. You can imagine. Prudently, you can imagine that would say, you know. The the lane or just off the lane is used for food trucks. So midsummer festival, we have a lot of food trucks and all that. That would access or permit that kind of usage.
So those two. Tracks there, is that chip seal?
It is chip seal, yes.
I mean, one thing, I don't know. I don't know. I'm sure folks have an opinion about the Kribel Gallery, which was. Designed in two thousand and three, and it has the silo, it has the gables and all that. It's really a false history. And when you see it in the context of Florence Griswold House. They're 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 different architectures, even though they're they're both in the traditional style. This project in our minds is really a landscape project more than anything. We do and and I think there's something very exciting about. A much more robust screening of landscape as you see it from Old Lime Road. Not not only in that it it kind of highlights or. Celebrates the Florence Griswold House as the as the kind of crown jewel. But it sort of is, it delays that kind of element of surprise for visitors until they get to the drop off. The next slide is really where the drop off is. You would come in, there'd be a. Farm gate. That's the pasture that you're you're, you know, taking in that view of the pasture with Florence Griswold House to the right. And the new entrance to the left. But it really takes Kribel. Sort of out of play as you see it along Old Lime Street. And it's more about, you know, the house, the historic house, and then this kind of surprise element of the the. The pasture you get later as a visitor, once you get out of your car and you start moving towards the museum.
Yeah, I think a big goal, we keep saying landscape, landscape. As a national historic landmark, part of our destination comes from the fact that we are this very significant, very important cultural landscape. And yet what we say to the visitors when they first come is they see a lot of concrete and asphalt. And it's the antithesis of saying to them, this is a really important landscape. Old Lime is really important. It's it's natural beauty is what it. Still draws people to here today, certainly what drew the artists. And from our perspective. Once they've got past. The wonderful historic house, then they saw. A really cluttered landscape that didn't fit within that narrative of this is a really important cultural landscape. Not alone the unsafe conditions of pedestrians walking through that landscape. So this is this is really about positioning the landscape. And putting that precedent back on this is a really important national historical landscape. So that's it. That's where we are at the moment.
In keeping with the historic nature of the cultural landscape, have you? I I'm interested in whether there's any alternative to the fence that you have pictured here. I mean, the wall or whatever you. Would it be, would you consider something that looks more like a historic stone wall?
Yeah, that's a great. So if you go this, we have a new. It's actually be out of date. We have a we have a. It's more, yes, a much more old line looking stone stone wall. John, that's my passion. John and I have a passion for stone walls. We can probably kind of geek out on that, to be told. You know, one of the great assets of Old Line from my perspective is the cultural, the story of course, the stone walls. And so we've already. And again, part of this iterative process and this kind of feedback reinforces that. So we have a. A a looser form wall in the updated rendering. You know, your thoughts on what the gates could look like would be invaluable. Pete and I did do a. Lunch tour of every single gate we could find in Old Line. Maybe we took pictures and sent them off, but you all might have really great feedback and ideas around. You know, what would look well for a gate? So yes, to answer your question.
Let me let me make a few a few comments. Thank you. I mean, this is this is very.
Thanks again for your time. Appreciate it.
Just so you you've accurately captured a picture of where the historic district stands. So our jurisdiction. Covers. Anything in that. Space. So the shaded tan space. That's that's visible from a public way, which would include. Lime Street, obviously, but the river. If there were something. Tucked behind, let's say, the barn, some new structure, but it was visible for the river, may may well not be. Just a footnote, it's so ridiculous to me to have parcels in the historic district. You can see the district actually bifurcates. A building up above. I think two years after the Old Line Historic District was. Was instituted in nineteen seventy one, the state passed a statute saying any historic district has to include lots that are surveyed, but. Old Line wasn't going to spend money on a survey, so they just said three hundred feet back from the center of. Of of Lime Street. Our concern is with. Our our approval concern is with the permitting. Excuse me, our approval concern is with exterior structures, which is. Is broad. I mean, obviously. Buildings, but anything attached to the ground. That would include the the driveway if a portion of the reshaped driveway falls within that.
And it does. Yeah, it does. I think the new entry drive is certainly. Right in here. So it would be in your jurisdiction, as with the gates, I think.
One question we would have. Let me put it this way. We have not approved new driveways that are asphalt covered. If you're resurfacing something, it's up to you. This would be a continuation of an an asphalt, so I'm not saying never never say never, but. You might want to think about, could you do a chip seal on top of asphalt for the whole entry, which perhaps would help. Make it feel a bit more.
I agree.
Historic.
You think it's already, he thinks it's already chip sealed. It may may well be that. That we've proposed that, but we will make a note of that anyway.
We we have. This is not really, I I expect strictly part of the renovation process, but. We have jurisdiction over. Signs are considered structures. Or alternatively, if they're not attached to the ground, they're considered. Advertising signs if they say anything that communicates a message. And the statute does not distinguish between. Permanent or temporary signs. To avoid a cumbersome. Process of coming in for approval of temporary signs. If you envision. Temporary signs to announce events, we should have a a session. I mean, again, this this could be done. And anytime, just to make sure signals are straight on types of signs, locations of signs. We also, I mentioned this, I think, in an email to 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 Joshua, have a number of other statutory. Authority to not approval. But giving recommendations. Coordinating with other organizations interested in his history and historical structures. If I think folks here would be particularly interested in if you could spend a minute highlighting. What you have in mind with respect to. Archive space and use of the the archives.
If you have a a rendering, if you could pull up the rendering, honestly, but.
I don't think I have it. I don't know if you have it on your. But you're talking about the research center.
Yeah, I think of. And then in the meantime, can you pull up the, just so I can show them in place?
I think we have. Plan here, yes. Oh, it is the old one, yeah.
The updated.
It isn't, no, the next one is the same. It's not updated. Ah, these are slightly. Updated. Plans, but.
So as you know, we have a really, really wonderful. Committee of dedicated volunteers and board members working in our archival collection, working hand in hand. With our crack curatorial team. And for those of you who've. Done that work, you know that our current research center is. Yes, it's a little, it's a little tight. You may also be aware that we have a really important and I think very significant. Regional, if not statewide, important collection of archival material that. Is really key to our mission because oftentimes it's by doing research and those collections that will spark. Future exhibition ideas, including the exhibition we did that we opened this past February and ran through. June, their Kim and Earth photographs of William and Liam. So it's a it's an important part of what we do. We have an important collection relating to the old line artists pollinate. And so. We kept. You know, sort of talking about this with our team. And again, as part of this real iterative process. This. I'll wait just a second. This is Spencer's building, sorry. So he's, yeah, I think it's a. There we go. So we threw some really great work by the the guys here. They figured out a way that we could make a slight adjustment to the education spinner and. Give us double the space for a new collection research center. I have to acknowledge that Carolyn has been intimately involved, working with these guys on ideas and has been part of the iterative process. So more or less what we're planning is. Five hundred and seventy five linear square feet of compact storage for archival collection, which will be towards the the rear. And then three new workspaces for the study of the collection. So it's doubling the size of the research center. Now. I think what makes it really exciting for for those of us who are so committed to local history. Is its connectivity to the education center and our flexible gallery. So we envision being able to take materials. Taking items from the collection storage and using this for conferences and seminars related to the study of our local shoreline. Connecticut history, so that accessibility of all that being right there to public space. We could envision having this space used for archival exhibitions. But that connectivity and the idea that we have a flexible space right next door to the art study space is really exciting. This is a little. Door into the work study space. So we're pretty, yeah, here's the. Here's the rendering. This window is up for question. We're not sold on that. We'll probably will eliminate the window as much as we like it, just because of some concerns regarding the safety of the materials. But you get the basic idea. We still have to work through. Our library collection. Our library collection will spread out in three or four different places. We have some work to do to make sure that we consolidate some of that material and 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 make sure that we're not having duplicate materials. Some of that still has to be worked out, but this gives you a pretty solid understanding of. Our collection and research center. And I I think it's really. Key and critical to how we move forward with our mission. It really is. I like, I've been saying to people, imagine it's the research and development wing of our business, right? This is where we do the. The groundbreaking research that often leads to new exhibitions.
Thank you.
So Joshua, just to clarify, it's possible that I still like the window, so it's possible that that a shade or something could protect the historic material, and that would be great, but. Window aside, the library is not going to be continued continue to be housed in this in this space. Is that correct?
It it's possible that we'll use the shelving system for library collections. We, Amy and I have. We, Amy and I have even had some discussion about, is there any way? This is new to, don't, don't worry, Noel. It's still. I'm just giving Noel a lot more work here. It's, you know, if she and I are just pondering, could we, could we extend contact storage this way? And you give up some of the research space, but you would have more space for contact storage of library material, for example. That's still something that we're, she and I are negotiating, we need to set up a conversation with you.
One idea, maybe, I, I don't know what you're envisioning in the, in the drawers back beyond the end.
Flat file.
Sorry.
Flat file.
Flat files.
Yep.
I mean, I've seen at other museums, uh, very attractive cabinets sort of set in that you pull out to essentially view many exhibitions.
Yes.
Original documents, so.
John, we probably, just speaking about the archives, we probably need the flat storage more than we need to use the flat storage as an exhibition space. And I, I, you know, part of the, part of the appeal of this, not to mention maybe the necessity of it for the work Joshua describes, which is so essential to what the museum does, is the research space.
That's right.
Compromising or reducing the research space takes, takes away significantly from the purpose of the, of this.
I mean, we have, um, you know, the, the library, the, on one hand, they're not widely used right now. You can make the argument because they're not as accessible. The flip side is many institutions are reducing their, not their archival part of the library or their rare books, but their library portion of it. Because most researchers, they can get them pretty easily in our library alone. Or if there's a book that you really need, you go to eBay and Amazon and you have it delivered to your house for half the cost of what it takes you to come to Old Line. I'm not saying, I, I happen to have a library collection myself, much to my wife's shrug grin, because we move them all over the place, but the rowdy is in today's world. You know, um, they're, they're less necessary for, for research in terms of people coming to a research center. I think the real emphasis here is access to our archival collection. And I think this is exciting because it opens up the possibility for community use of those archives in new and exciting ways that we just can't facilitate now.
The last thing I was going to mention is just about timing, timing of, or sequencing of approval process. We've worked with different departments in town to get them to recognize, and many of them have, and put it on their documents, that, you know, if you're going to need the historic district approval and then a building approval or historic district approval, then a zoning approval, this is stop one. And many of them, if you say, okay, we're ready to go ahead and build and you want to get going and you go to the building department, they, they should say, well, if it's in the historic district, bring us your approval, you know, first. And I think we're, we're pretty, uh, as flexible as we can be about, uh, timing. We meet monthly, usually the first, uh, Monday morning each month, except in, uh, November, I mean, i- if it's an election day, the next day, our November meeting is going to be November twelfth. We do not meet in August.
Tenth, I thought.
I'm sorry, the tenth, yeah, instead of the third. We don't meet in, in August. If it's a, it's a big project, we, we have in the past scheduled special meetings. You know, if there's a real, uh, emergency, we can, could, can do that. But do kind of work backwards if you're going to need approval from different.
Yeah, just.
It's, it's.
Pulling the thread on that a little bit, I, we've talked with Eric Nath about submitting on November third, which is a week prior to their November hearing.
Yes.
And then our application is received at their November hearing. It's not heard, it's just received. And then we're heard for the first time in December. He's recommended that we submit the same application to Gateway, even though they have a statutory, you know, obligation to give that application to Gateway. He said, just get it off to them right away, same time they submit to me. We can do the same thing with you guys at that time. I don't know, that probably is not enough time for you to review it, to be discussing it formally with you on the tenth. I would have.
Well, we, we need to get an application ten days ahead of time because we need to get a legal advertisement and schedule a, a, a public hearing. But if, you know, end of, end of October is feasible for you to submit a certificate of application, uh, form with supporting documentations and diagrams.
Yeah, I guess it doesn't hurt to begin discussion with you as soon as we can. And I think that's doable on our end.
And if, if it's, if it's something, if you did come in, in November and it's something we couldn't handle all, at that time, that we have sixty days from sixty or sixty-five days, I can't remember, from receipt of an application to act on it. So it would, you know, could carry over to, uh, December. But we don't, we don't have the same process with zoning that you submit something.
Okay.
The next month.
That's all I know. Well, I think we'll try to target getting something new in advance of your November tenth meeting. You know, the ten days.
This has been extremely helpful, you know, this is a good pre.
I, I had two non-commission comments for you, just to share. Because it's, the building really is outside of our jurisdiction. But one of the things that struck me is that we have two structures now, two modern structures overlapping, right? And is it possible to soften the structure behind the new structure? So that, that you really read, you read the landscape, the new horizontal lines and, and just for consideration.
Yeah, I mean, uh, so you're talking about the three cable ended.
Yeah, I mean, even the color, you know, I.
No, we, so we actually did a color study.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Um, where we suggested different colors for those three peaks.
Right.
Um, we even, you know, said, what would, what would it cost, what would it look like if we eliminated those peaks? And as you probably wouldn't be surprised, I was. Um, so we're employing the use of new.
There you go.
Trees to help strain that. And then we, for cost considerations, part, but also the color study, it, the white, at least in this scheme, helped it fade out when you painted it gray or black.
Deliberately, this new porch element has pulled fifteen or feet forward to create that zone for the landscaping, to kind of make it feel like for visitors that you're in the landscape, you're not against another building or there's not multiple architectures that are kind of stacking up. So that was, that was a deliberate consideration.
That was the one, that was the one kind of just gut feel. The other, the other general comment, again, not HTC, but in your large room, consider an acoustic plaster type ceiling.
Gee, you have some experience.
I'm just saying.
You know, we have those.
Great, right. When you see a big room like that, and even this room.
It's very lively room.
You had the glass and, yeah.
I mean, just back to the, I mean, part of our scheme here, and this is with great, a great deal of respect for so many people who worked so hard back in two thousand and two and three to bring the Creveaux Gallery on board. And it was, it was really wonderful. We just feel, you know, we, we wanted this, this, this new addition to soften that facade so that, as Conrad said, the Griswold House takes precedent. That, the Griswold House and the landscape of, that's why we're here. That's the National Landmark status. That's what gives us our street cred, if you will, which is a crewway saying it. So what the problem is, when you come onto the campus now and you see all those different shapes and forms, it, it is really, really confusing to the visitor. I've had people, it's funny, you said silos. I've had people come to me and say, what's the, what's up with the castle? Am I, am I going to tourists? I mean, it's, it was great for the time and really, you know, successful in some regards. But in retrospect, now where our emphasis is really on that visitor experience, we just wanted to declutter that, that view.
Is that the covered walkway that you mentioned earlier?
Yeah, so half of the porch, and the porch took inspiration from the artist sitting on the front porch.
On the side, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, uh, on the side portrait, although they did have performances and they did things at the front porch too.
And that's, could happen there, no?
Yeah, so that, yeah, so this half is all open air. We can fit a hundred and twenty people for, in, for an event undercover space. I imagine that this would be the go-to place, other than Cafe Flow. This would be the go-to place for community members to come and have a cup of coffee or if it's the afternoon, you may be like me, want a chocolate chip cookie. Um, and so people, a new space for the community to gather and socialize. That was really important because one of the great beauties of the Florence Griswold Museum is its sense of community and what it does for this community, so new community space. But you can also imagine a jazz band or a theatrical performance happening undercover. And we have this brand new performance path, you know, this pasture. I can just see it now, people sitting out there with their blankets and maybe their picnic dinner, watching a hearing or watching some, some music. So it gives us great flexibility. Maybe our annual meeting now takes place, uh, under the porch. And then the converse, or, um, in addition to that, should say, this half is glassed. And the whole intent is make it really obvious where people are to go. So John, you mentioned signage. Our goal is to do this in such a way that we won't need a lot of signage, right? If we do this right and we think we are doing it right, people will intuitively know where to go and not have to clutter up this historic landscape with a lot of signage. You know, our current signage was useful for a time, but honestly, I think it confuses more people than it helps people now. This scheme with this under glass, you'll, I, we feel pretty confident visitors will know where to go, right? So this half is shop, that half is our new lobby and front desk and ticketing.
Where do you get the coffee and the cookie?
Oh, so, uh, all right, so here's the idea, see if you, see if it resonates. We know the artists walked the property and walked along with our carts. So we're intending to take.
Cart.
Cart, an art cart. Could be the art cart cafe or art cart something, but essentially take an art cart. And it's, you know, coffee service, it's, it's, you know, maybe geared to cold soda, cookies, go. You know, it's not Cafe Flow with seated.
Would be a seasonal type of undercover there, you could bring it out.
This, this half, just because I know you guys appreciate this, this is storage, right? So plenty of outdoor storage, uh, space for, you know, the, the cafe or for the cart, but also for tables and chairs.
And that pasture stays natural, the other side is, the lawn is cut, is that right?
Yeah, when, when Joshua was talking about the people sitting on the lawn, I was, I was thinking to myself, you know, I think it will be nice to let that grow up and be a field, be a farm field. And I think there'll be times of year when you'll mow it down. And then those might be the times you do, possibly let people congregate on it.
We've also talked about mowing paths instead of a fixed path and maybe displaying sculpture in this field so that you could kind of walk through the path.
With a leaf fairy village.
We fairy, yeah, that too. Yeah, yeah, David Rowes excited, we've just given him a whole new set of real estate.
Don't tell my sheep, they'll be over there.
They may need to come to summer camp.
There you go.
I have, I just have three very quick comments before we move on. One is for phase one, uh, we were just talking about softening the facades and the west facade, which is going to be the first that will be developed. The, the materials and the solid space in between the glass are pretty stark. Um, and not, to my view, not very aesthetically appealing and also not very historically consistent with other fabrics. So I just want to recommend that if that's what you decide to go with, that you soften it with, um, with planters, perhaps, you know, permanent planters where you could have something espaliered or where you could have some, you know, year-round green like boxwood or something. So I, I think that would help soften that facade.
Uh, that's a great, great, great feedback. And, um, certainly it's something that the, the team will, will consider potentially incorporate. One thing I do want to assure you in terms of the materiality of the project, all of this material is Alaskan yellow scenery. And it will, we, we picked it because it's virtually maintenance-free, very, very, very durable. It will weather to a very nice gray. And within probably, what, eighteen to twenty-four months?
Yeah, it depends a little bit on the exposure, but yeah, the, the idea was natural, introducing natural wood to this kind of conglomerate of marsh field and creeper, which is super white now. Will help soften it just by virtue of the, the color. But it's, it's a, it's a good point. I mean, we, I don't know that we're fully, I mean, we probably are fully set on the way we detail it. Yeah.
And then, you know, just as a reference, because it's, it's interesting to see precedence, but if you Google the Fogg Museum at Harvard, their new addition was clad in, uh, Alaskan yellow scenery. And it looks, you, you wouldn't, you can't even tell that it's wood, but you can tell that it's got some materiality to it. And it looks, it, it really.
I mean, it's, it's different than painting something.
And, and the gray will actually marry with the building behind because of the roof. And in other words, that gray and the, the metal roof behind, it'll bring the, the two together, yeah, yeah.
My second thought is for, this is for phase two, so you know, this is way down the line. But I mentioned before the wall in the, uh, separating the parking lot from the, what you're calling the pasture. But the hardscape all through that section doesn't seem to be consistent with the historical nature or, uh, of, of much of the rest of the, of the landscape that you're proposing. So I recommend that you think whether, you know, looking at this, whether there's any other material that you could use for that, I think that's going to be the, the, the drop-off platform and the wall, just to think about it.
So underneath here is going to be Connecticut granite. We've, we've picked out and sourced Connecticut granite.
It's like, it's called Liberty Granite, which is from Connecticut, it's sort lovely source granite.
So all natural to the best of our ability materials. There is a small section where we're using, uh, aggregate concrete, if I said that correctly. It's a concrete, but mixed with, with aggregate. And in our case, the aggregate will be, uh, Liberty granite, fresh Liberty granite. So it'll have a materiality that's very familiar to, um, to, to the environs. But there, you know, we, we needed to do some hardscaping close by and we're, we're picking materials to the best of our ability that are Connecticut-based that blend into the, to the landscape.
Yeah, I want, I want to say this path and we'll get it right in our application so, you know, you know. But I want to say this is stabilized stone dust in one direction, but where we had the high-traffic, uh, walkway towards the entrance, that's the, the seated aggregate concrete that, um, is a better, a better surface for, for ADA accessibility and, and, you know, elderly folks coming. This, uh, the wall though is different and, and I wish we had the, the later rendering. We could share that with you as well. It's, it's more of a kind of rubble stone, like a field stone wall that you would see.
So it won't look like the concrete and asphalt that you see now. Right now it's just pure concrete with no aggregate in it. It'll look sort of, it'll look like a, a path, but it will be, you won't have all of the movement that is associated with it.
And just, just for the record, I mean, are the comments you're hearing about the stone wall or not? This, the comments about the driveway are sort of comments, I guess you could take is coming from.
Yeah, no, we have.
This is just us.
It's good to be that, it's good to be that because they're, you know, they're all part of the same.
Well, you have a stone wall out front, right?
That's right. Do we have a field? So it's more the.
As you're heading into the left.
No, in front of the museum. I thought in front of the museum.
Talking about there's, there's more in front of us.
And, and in front of it, that's right.
That's, I mean, that, that, I would look at that and that's.
That's not really, um, historic, I think that, the low stone wall that's there. It's nice, but it's not.
It's not, yeah. The one in, the one in front of Pamela's.
And ours.
And yours is, yeah, is, 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 is the original, yeah.
You can tell because the stones keep falling.
Joshua, last thing, we're, we're running out of time, I know, but for phase two. Just your last thing, we're we're running out of time, I know, but for phase two, we're going to be talking in the in the commission about um demolition of historic houses and since Huntley Brown is a historic house, it is, you know, even though it's not, it it was moved to this property. We have that ex- that a similar example to that just last week where historic house moved to a property was being considered for demolition. So it's something that you'll want to think ahead. If you can't get it removed or even if you intend to get it removed and and replaced, which would be great, because then it wouldn't have to be demolished. Um, that's just something to 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 think about as you move toward phase two.
Oh, and one last thing, sorry, this this is, this is something that the commission hasn't quite taken on yet, but we're working on it. And that is lighting and thinking of a dark sky principle. And and of course, the back, you're, you know, on Lieutenant River, so light going that way, but also light coming towards the district as well, yeah.
We spoke with the, we had an informal meeting with Gateway as well, like run like press fast, so we we we're we're certainly sensitive to that.
Great.
Thank you for your time. Um, so well, you'll, I guess you'll hear from us in a few weeks, we'll we'll be sending a package and look forward to talking to you again and I guess in November.
And never lose the opportunity to remind folks that many hands make great dreams become a reality. And if you're so inclined to contribute to this noble project, or the people that we should speak to, any ideas or suggestions.
I'm sorry. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a public hearing, but we're not that formal, so sure. I missed what you said at the end, you couldn't find the flow chart.
It the steps to be paid to go through from beginning to end with all county code. That something doesn't seem clear on a project like this. The only reason I raise it and you brought up some very good points is that the Florence Griswold Museum is able to have approvals be the run sun easily, whether it's Gateway or whether it's this commission or whether it's zoning. And then they just are over, they they don't have to be, they don't have to go back. For something that happens because a section of the public decides have reaction to this meeting. Be part of this, that is, they play the game through, people are listening on your phone. So how the, how, but you brought that up, John, which was great. Is that, is this going to run, are these going to run tandem? Is the historical um commission around you tandem with the other applications and then yours is finished? Or are you going to approve this in sections and then we get to come back?
Well, I mean, as it stands now, each each department or commission has a separate jurisdiction. So it needs to be done, if you will, cereatum. Um, and as I mentioned, the historic district commission approval comes comes first. But I think you have an excellent suggestion that I will bring up with with Eric Knapp, the land land use planner about making accessible on the on the website, some kind of flow chart. We we have had meetings, uh although the last one was probably a couple years ago with different boards and commissions represented, talking about possible ways to build coordination. So.
I was just concerned because um zoning was is Eric is a very involved with, you know, rewriting the zoning, and people all know, um Jay Marsh is up for reelection. And um in the oral history of the town, which was about a year ago, I guess, Jay's one of her focuses was to talk about maintaining the cultural of this town, but bringing it to the, to the time we're living in now and that we're in respecting that. And that's what this commission stands for, but they're just, you want to make sure this this project, which is quite special, um is going to be a real crown, which have real jewel in the crown. And then that it being teaming could not be anything that gets the against because there seems to be a radical mindset.
Yeah, thank you.
Next time, John.
Alright, we uh end up a few minutes later, but not too bad. Martha, can you briefly do the secretary's report?
Sure, um, one thing we need to do is to approve the meeting schedule for twenty twenty six. So that I can file it.
We turn to that page in your packet, then you can see the difficulty with with this. I think it's wise to put the second Monday on for November.
Yeah.
Sir, any discussion about the meeting schedule? Their motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting schedule for twenty twenty six.
Sarah's second?
I'll second it.
Then moves, Russ seconds. Carolyn stepped away, but I think we're okay to vote, all in favor. And opposed, none, abstaining, none, it's approved.
Right. Okay, um, we are uh monitoring seventeen situations, which is down from twenty four last.
Excuse me a sec, we without you approve the meeting schedule for next year.
Um, okay, so seventeen, uh, starting with Rose Lane, which we just heard their presentation. Uh, and then the one, one Lime Street, uh their renovations for the porch and their foundations expire in June of next year. Uh, Six Lime Street, I have been in touch with Elizabeth Fowler. Um, we'll, we will put that on the agenda for November because she um isn't sure she wants to replace the rest of the fence that they took down. Um, so if she's going to leave that removed, that needs to be approved or else she has to put it back. And then uh thirty two Lime Street, we have a like for like forum to replace the doors on the sunroom. Uh, thirty six Lime Street for the temporary railings. Um, I sent Jocelyn Challenger a letter, I haven't heard anything back from her. The CVA for the temporary railing by the front door, they're just wooden railings has expired, so they either need to be removed or she needs to apply CVA to have them approved as permanent or if she wants to change them. You know, so I explained all that to her, but I haven't heard anything, so I will follow up with that again. Um, thirty eight Lime Street, their uh renovations are continuing and that CVA expires next month, so they'll be on the agenda. Um, Center School, front door walkway, I think that's, looks like it's done.
I have a question at the Center School. Um, when they were here with their presentation, they brought this very thick bulletproof glass that they said was going to be side lights to the door. There are no side lights.
I also had a question from somebody in the community about glass on the the door, uh, uh, what do you call it up top?
Transom.
That they hit, so there's a question whether there was glass in it, transom also.
I thought that, I thought it was.
I think we didn't, I think the door as it now exists, we didn't approve, right? We approved something different.
They came in to ask for a revision to the door.
Right.
The drawings included the side lights and it came with the physical glass.
Yes.
You're right.
They, they had to change the original door because of ADA requirements. The original door was two pieces with a centered thing and so they changed it to one, but um they should have done what was approved and not changed it.
Not change the side, the side glass.
Yeah.
Or the design, the wrong design, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that.
Yeah, you could check with them.
Yep.
And check about, check about the transom glass as well. If if that was in the, I I just don't remember if that was in the original.
It was definitely in the revised approval.
Right, it was just transom and maybe they got rid of the side lights.
I think so.
I can't remember.
But that's part of the field of when you close something off, it's less accessible. And so the whole idea was to have the glass to have, to maintain an openness, even though of a safety, and that's the class, so.
If you could ask them and and
Supposed to be explosion proof or something.
If, if they haven't complied, it probably, it may be worth sending a letter just to get something in the in the record.
Yeah, I'll have to stop over and look at that. Yeah, definitely. Um, fifty nine Lime Street, the L Y S B fence, that was on the agenda today. Um, the uh storefronts are getting their glass replaced. So hopefully it's life for life, the way they said.
What is the number of that?
Hard to tell. Sixty four.
Did they change the scale of the glass?
Show you the picture, what is, what is the address?
Sixty four and sixty eight Lime Street.
There were, seemed to be larger panes, undivided.
Yeah, I I don't think it looks the same.
Sixty four and sixty eight.
Sixty eight.
Have they put the mullion, maybe they haven't put mullions in yet.
Here are the photographs, the original, anybody wants to see them? Sorts of them, everybody gets in those big panes.
A follow up.
Oh, so they are the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. They're not thermal though, he made a point of but it's quarter inch glass, not thermal glass.
I mean, these are just over, over time, just different.
They rebuilt, I mean, they were going to rebuild all the yeah, which they did.
It's great.
And where there was that
Very helpful.
Steel post, uh round post.
Right.
Yes.
They brought the sections together.
Oh, good.
And then they um routed out
For the boats.
From a two inch round, I think, to fit in there.
Oh.
So it looks like
Right.
what it was, but they removed that.
But this, this is the current glass layout?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I I driving by, I just took a quick glance and it, it looked good.
You really have to block it to notice all these things.
We're gonna have to have a follow up uh review. Stroll, yeah.
And we also have to think about what, what are the consequences if the final result is not identical to what we approved, then what? Do we have any recourse?
Well, and that and the comment here goes back to the the wet, the the little tile gathering where it moved. We had to push back and then it came forward because of wetlands and it didn't come back to us. It's like, once we approve it, it's not only the construction, but also as it makes its way through the the process and and I'd love the point that this Low Gris project, though our part's pretty small, you know, but we, it would be a great project to instigate a process to follow through the committees, through the design, you know, maybe the fi- maybe we request the the final design drawings. And then we have a follow up site visit. Maybe it's part of our process on major projects, like Erica's project, should we not go out and and and
Double check.
Double check everything, yeah.
Double check, once she moves the building forward toward the street, what does it, how does that change?
Right.
The impression.
But just our own, our own process on on this follow up.
And to let them know, I mean, let them know at the outset.
At the outset.
To do some site visits along the way, just to make sure it's going as
Right.
We can go maybe in our, on our, as we finally resolve, revise our website.
Yes.
As part of the process, I think we should include that, it's a very good point.
John, do we have any enforcement procedure or, yeah, procedure in place? Can we fine people if they are not compliant?
You have to go to court.
We have the budget.
No. Right, I mean, what, what happens realistically is you try to cajole people and then Eric Knapp has been helpful in going out and talking face to face. Some of the violations, for example, the old lime ends, sign on the fences is zoning violation as well as not in compliance with our guidelines, so Eric will go talk to them and he has procedures short of bringing a court case to uh you know, issue cease and desist letters and that sort of thing. We don't, we don't, we have to rely on.
You remember, we have to get local law enforcement to say we get a cease and desist.
I mean, the other, the only other thought is to have some way and and in a way, having Martha's secretary's report serves as public notice function. My thought, as we get into approving in advance Realtor signs and and temporary signs for various organizations, we could list in our minutes or on the website, the following organizations have have appeared and are in compliance with our guidelines about temporary signs and then, you know, you got some that are listed.
Oh, that are listed.
Well, I mean, I guess you could do it either way, you you can't, you you can't, you can't record anything in the land records, that's, that's about a violation. But it it does turn into a, a, a an issue that can come up on the sale of property, we faced that with whoever.
Across the street, yeah.
Across the, across the street and they were trying to sell their property and they had done something that just didn't comply with our conditions and before they could sell the property, they had to, they had to correct it.
Well, Anne Anne Brown, when she was CEO, she got Enoch Pedersen to remove a deck that he had put up.
Paul Deck that they tried to reapply for, I mean, recently, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, that he had built it in terms, in terms of people coming in after they have done work and saying, well, I've done the work, please, please approve me, I mean, my general take is harsh as it may sound. I I don't think you get a break for for violating the law. If we should say.
Ask forgiveness.
I still remember one of the early minutes, I went back and looked for some reason at the early days of the H D C minutes. And there was a case where somebody had built something and then came into the, to the H D C. And on the record, they they did approve it, but they just gave him a chewing out. This ever happens again, you know, you're like
He will shun you.
You'll have to wear a special sign.
It's a carrot and a stick we work with.
Anyway, other, other bits in your report?
Seventy Lime Street, like for like roof repair replacement, a small roof there. Uh, seventy two Lime Street, their shed. Uh, I don't, I don't know if that's been, they put that in yet or not?
See it.
No.
No.
Uh, seventy-four Lime Street, which we just finished talking about. Uh, the eighty-five Lime Street, old diamond signage.
As to that need, at this point needs a letter.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you want to, can you draft something and I'll look at it? Danny and I will look at it, cause Danny's still on the commission. You know, or, or spear die.
Yep, and then Florence Griswold Museum. Their, they, they must be done with the fence by now, right? The fences.
Yeah, yeah, they've put in the loam.
It looks good.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Uh, and then. Doesn't all get washed away.
Ninety-seven Lime Street, there, they still haven't started their garden shed.
Mm-hmm.
That expires next July.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Paul's Road sidewalk proposal, you haven't heard anything.
It turns out the work they were doing, I talked to Martha Shoemaker, was state work and it apparently is ADA requirement that you have a cement patch that connects the crosswalk to the crosswalk signal or something like that. So it's.
A little like ADA work, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and then one oh five Lime Street.
We'll come back. Uh, actually, I, I'm going to, we need to submit a like for like on the siding that we're going back from the fire. So we'll do that and then we'll come back on the tents with our final formal CVA.
Right.
Um, and then one ten Lime Street for the driveway gravel. And you just gave me something else.
For the, for the fence, the need some repair work, which, most of which will be done next year, but.
Uh, let's see, and did the meeting schedule, historic plaque program. Um, yeah, Carolyn did give me some photos and etchings of the area. Um, it's hard to tell. It's hard to see. You can see the little, the little building. There is, there is a little building there, yeah. I think that was eighteen thirty-four, right? Yeah, there was a structure there. Something there. So it's hard to tell what it was, if it was, you know, the soap factory or what it's supposed to be. But anyway.
Is this Robin Sedgwick, Sedgwick? Oh, we talked about Robin Sedgwick.
No, Gaston, Fred Gaston.
Oh, Gaston.
Yeah, right, yeah. That other, and you know, Robin's. That's all I had. I mean, that's all I've ever seen, so. Yeah, yeah. And Robin's house really, I think, was just like a boat shed or something.
Yeah.
Everybody always wants their house to be like.
Something else. She wanted it to be something else, right?
He always wanted to be from like seventeen hundred and sometimes it's just not, it's not.
They didn't build ships there. They just did.
It's been, something's been there for a long time. I don't know. Um, and that's all I have for that.
And, and Rose Lane, of course.
And Rose Lane, yeah, Rose Lane was at the beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, new and ongoing business. I think given the time, um, we should postpone all of this. The Realtor sign language has been revised, but uh, we can, as I said last meeting, nobody's beating down the door with questions. So we can save that for next meeting. And pick up on these other, other things. So before we adjourn.
We'll think after.
After we adjourn.
We'll adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're now adjourned. Are we off?